I'd like to call this Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you very much, everyone. And just to remind those at home, the Town Council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link to the YouTube. But again, thanks, everyone, for coming. To start off with, I do not have any veterans' condolences to share, but I do have a recent one of a longtime member in town I'd like to mention. David Wallahosian, lifelong resident of Bridgewater, passed away recently on September 6th. He was very involved in the community. He was Vice President of Bridgewater Youth Soccer, Chairman of the Conan Community Health Center, and Treasurer of the Bridgewater Arena and Citizen Scholarship Foundation, and many other areas of interest in volunteerism that he did over the years. So I want to extend condolences to David's family. I also would like to have a moment of silence on his behalf, and also, being that it's 9/11 Eve, to all those that were lost in some way in relationship to 9/11, directly, indirectly, friends, family members, loved ones. Can I please have a moment of silence? Thank you. All right. So to start off, we'll look to approve minutes from previous meetings. For the August 7th meeting minutes, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
And a second by Mr. McKinnon, initial by Mr. Chase. Any further discussion on those minutes? This can be done by vote to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And also, for the meeting minutes of the August 13th meeting, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Strickles. Any further discussion? All those who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. I do not have any direct announcements from the president's seat at this point in time. I do not have any proclamations, so we will move to Citizens' Open Forum. Due to Massachusetts' open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment period. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future Town Council meeting. I would ask anyone coming up to please state your name and address for the record, and please keep it to three minutes or less when anybody would like to come up and speak for Citizens' Open Forum.
Ray Agemi, Olgers Road. I can't seem to get away from this place. Three things. I apologize ahead of time if I misinterpreted what I read and so forth. First of all, on August 13th, the last meeting in August, I spoke regarding the changes that the town manager had proposed for the town code, which would allow the tree committee to bring onboard a arborist, or a certified arborist, if we could not find somebody in town. I noticed that the Rules and Procedures Committee met yesterday, and that was not on the agenda. I just want to encourage you to move in that direction, because it's incumbent on us that we have an expert on the tree committee to make sure that we are doing the right thing. So I just encourage you again. Secondly, just off-topic, I noticed that you're taking up changes to Central Business District and density bonuses. I was on the planning board when the Broad Street project came before the planning board roughly three years ago, and density bonus, I thought, was...I had problems with it, and we had a difficult period. I notice, if I read it correctly, the density, the required number of residential units per acre by zoning is 18, and the density bonus allowed up to 26. Your new proposal, if I read it correctly, is to change 26 to 22. I think it's a good idea. I think the density bonus has its issues, and to keep the number of residential units per acre lower is good. So I just encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else, please come up.
Good evening, councilors. Jonathan O'Garran, 19 Heather Lane in Bridgewater. I'm also the Chairman of the Bridgewater Veterans Council. I come before you tonight to request the town raise the POW MIA flag. During a ceremony that we will hold on September 20th in honor of National POW MIA Recognition Day, I asked the flag be formed at Town Hall as a reminder of the ultimate sacrifice by members of our military. Prisoners of war experience unspeakable torture following their capture. Some service members never come home. They never return to their family, and the family wonder where they are to this day. The loved ones are left without even having the peace of mind of knowing where the loved ones' bodies are. The one small comfort that we can offer is that we show that we remember them and honor their sacrifice by raising the POW MIA flag at the Bridgewater Town Hall. We recognize that these veterans and their loved ones have gone through what they have gone through, and we honor their willingness to give everything in name of service. The Town of Bridgewater's recognition of National POW MIA Recognition Day shows the town's more than 1,700 veterans, their families, and the entire community that we honor those who served and sacrificed. I respectfully ask for you, on behalf of myself, the Bridgewater Veterans Council, members of the community, to raise the POW MIA flag as a symbol for our town's support for POWs, soldiers who are still missing in action, and the entire veteran community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please come up. Janet?
Good evening, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I don't have much to say just on what's tonight about the ordinance FY25-009. I still want to go on record that I feel that we should have more than a total of five people. It doesn't have to be, you know, a huge number, but I think we could go more than five. I attended the Rules and Procedure meeting last night, was it last night? And I liked the amendments that were added. I thought those were good on both the ordinance and the...Mr. Murphy had good ideas, and I had no objection to that. The only thing I have objection to is the number. And the other thing is, I didn't know about the density thing. I just, you know, reading it, so I haven't had a chance to really fully understand it. But I don't agree with density bonuses, myself. This is what is allowed? That's what allowed. I don't think you should, you know, get a bonus because you're, you know, going to do something for the town, because I think if you're going to do that, then lower what the amount is to start with and put it up to what you want. You know, if 18 is what we want, then put it at 16 and give them a bonus of 18 type thing. I think that's too many, so I'm waiting to see what...I don't fully understand everything that's saying in here, so I'd like to have a lot of detail as to what is going on on that. So I'm waiting to hear what that says. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else?
I'm Kitty Dougherty, Conan Street. You have something very exciting on your agenda this evening. You know how long it takes for an elephant to have a baby? 22 months. You know how many elephants we could have had and the length of time that it took for that old State Farm Trail to get through the state planning process to the point where we are now? It's exciting. I hope that you all vote in favor, because what this is, is the conservation easement that the town is voting to accept. When we started first discussion on this old State Farm Trail possibility, it was 14 years ago, and we were down at the landing where the canoes are on the Town River, and at that point, the dilemma was, it's DOC land, and it's Article 97 land, and no one really knew how to approach it. And then, all of a sudden, five years ago, different things changed, and all of a sudden, we were able to get this onto the legislature's calendar and through, and here we are today, and it's awesome. It's so good with what we've been doing with our natural trail system and our connected trails, like Iron Works and then Stausenhot, and then we have Carver's Pond and the other trails, that with this particular trail, the old State Farm Trail, abutting the wild and scenic Taunton River, it caused the National Park Foundation to contact us and said, "We want you to apply for this particular grant." And in five weeks, they had sent us the money. That's a national thing, that it's now aware of what we're doing in this community and, say, in the three Bridwaters for our connected land and water trail system. So it's awesome possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Thank you for those that came up. Moving on to the appointments, we have none this evening. We do not have any hearings as well. Licensed transactions, we have none. Presentations, not this meeting, but next meeting we will have some. That brings us to aye, our Town Manager's report, and for our newly approved interim Town Manager, it will be her first Town Manager's report for us, so I'll turn it over to Blythe Robinson. Blythe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items to talk about tonight. The first is an update on the fire station. I'm sure you've all driven past the site on Pleasant Street, Route 104, and you can see that site work has begun, so that's going well so far. All the contractors are there doing what they need to do, and the team who are managing the project led by Mr. Rulie are meeting every Wednesday to work on all of those details, and that's going well, too. Also, we had the bond sale for the financing to pay for it last week. Those were opened on September 5th. The total budget for this project is just under $26 million, $25,962.15, in case anyone's counting, for which we sold bonds of $23 million. We received eight bids for those and got a net interest rate of just over 3.67%, which is in line with what the financial projections were. We're actually only borrowing $21,880,000, because the town received a premium lowering the amount that actually has to be taken. So, good news on all of that. The fact that we had eight bids and maintained our credit rating is excellent news for the town as well. The difference in how much we need between the amount I cited for the budget and the borrowing is being made up from ARPA funds, but you probably already knew that from past discussions. Also, wanted to let you know that we are thinking about, planning of having a groundbreaking, thinking about sometime in the period of October 15th to 22nd, as we get the site a little more prepared and safe for people to be on it. We will work with you to set up a date. I'm not sure if all of you want to come, some of you, you know, it's a big deal for the town, so we will keep you in the loop of what we're thinking about and coordinate that accordingly.
Great. Any questions on that? Mr. Lindig?
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it. I'm just curious to know how involved the Fire Station Building Committee is in the project.
The committee, I don't think they have been. At this point, now that the project is planned and approved, it's being managed by Mr. Rulie along with the OPM, the contractor, and other staff, such as the Finance Director.
Just one more follow-up to that. Understanding that, I served on the School Building Committee for the Mitchell, and our committee met for close to 75 meetings. I'm just thinking there's a committee, and, you know, I kind of think they should be utilized.
I very much understand. I can tell you what I've heard, what I've learned, is that in Bridgewater, when town projects get to this point, they are managed internally, and not having a building committee meet on that, that's what I understand has historically happened, but I understand your point.
Just to address that question, yeah, I mean, the committee for the fire station is working a little bit differently than the school-type committee. That's what I also learned, but I do think the Chair, Mr. Russian, is still involved in some areas. Ms. Robinson?
Oh, I was just going to ask a follow-up question of, how big is the committee, and is it actually full?
I believe that it was a full committee, and again, it needed a lot of the pre-work up to the construction period. Any other questions?
No.
Did you have one? Okay. All right. Were you handing...I didn't know if that was a hand or no.
Before we do move on, though, I do just want to request one thing. So during the Town Manager meetings with Mike, I'd always joke around, I have a list, and I do have a list, but since we only have one meeting, I'm just going to request for one thing on the next Town Manager report, and that's just the tire dump that is on Water Street and near BSU. To run you up to speed, there's about 5,000 tires in the middle of the woods, and where we last talked, the town engineer was looking at whose property it was on, if it was a college, if it was his property, the property owner, but abutting the college, just with all the mosquito issues, triple E, and, I mean, Middleborough even has a curfew now, too. I mean, I see that as a big concern in town. I mean, we made an ordinance, so tire dumps can't happen anymore, in that they need to be cleaned up around them, but I still, with all the triple E problems around, I see that as a public health issue.
Understood. Can you remind me of the general address?
So it's on Water Street?
On Water Street. Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Tansey, I believe, was looking at that.
Great.
So if you talk to him, he might be able to give you some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll let you finish your second part of your report, and if any other councilors have any other requests, we'll put that at the end of that.
So the second item I wanted to cover is a follow-up to a question at a recent meeting about my strategy with working with boards, committees, and commissions. And my strategy, I think, is very simple, which is to support them. I would say, though, that I'm impressed that Bridgewater took a decision sometime in the past to have a staff person dedicated to that. That's not typical, and I think it was a terrific step to make sure that volunteers have some support, primarily in either Josh McGrath or our office for a number of the committees, as well as the CED Department staffs, the committees that work with them, planning, zoning, conservation, and such. So out of the gate, I think that that needs to continue, that those chairs have a resource and someone to post their meetings, help with their minutes, follow up on details that are needed. But besides that, I think through myself, with support of others, providing Finance Department help with any financial questions that come up, or if there's an issue that might touch planning and zoning, Mr. Rulie's team would be involved, and I would work to pull them together to make sure that the questions are answered, the resources that are needed, get to those committees. I also understand that it's been the practice to support some committees by the manager or the assistant more directly. For instance, the CPC Committee, and Josh and I have a meeting with the Chair of that and Vice Chair later this week to prep for their next meeting, and would continue to help them, you know, in my capacity. I'm not sure I will make it to every single meeting, but my goal is to make it to the meetings I need to be at, and if it's open space one month, or, you know, someone else another, we'll work that out. And then, besides that, I think there's also the question of openings on committees and how we handle those. I think we need to take those more on a case-by-case basis. If there is a committee that can't function because they don't have a quorum, then taking up a recommendation to you for an appointment would make sense, so the business of that committee can continue in the interim. But for the long term, I think it would be best for a new permanent manager to make some of those decisions, and so as we go through the next few months, I think we need to just keep our eye on that and make appropriate decisions for what's best for the committee and for the town, and I'm happy to support that.
Great.
Thank you, Blythe. Any other questions to the Town Manager?
Just on that, if we do get appointments forwarded to us, I had asked the previous Town Manager if we could get, after it goes to Citizens Advisory Committee, could we see the resume for the people that we're voting on?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the Town Manager. Hi, Mrs. Robinson. I have two questions. I saw that in Wellesley, you negotiated a ground lease of town-owned land with a developer to build a recreation facility. Do you think you can help Bridgewater initiate such a plan? And the other thing, when you worked in Upton, you managed the renovation of a historical Town Hall, which we have here. So could you help Bridgewater get a plan on that and explain how you funded that with projects? I know it's a lot, but if you could just get us started, we'd be helpful.
Well, I think both are very long-term projects, like those. I mean, the one that Wellesley undertook had started before I got there, and they bought some land from a closed, from the diocese, from the closed Catholic Church, put out an RFP, sought developers for that property, and then it was a long negotiation to figure out how that would work. It's certainly possible, but it's something that, you know, maybe we, if there's an opportunity, we can start it, but I would honestly be handing it off to the next manager, because it will take many, many months to complete. With the Town Hall in Upton, that project was funded solely by, almost completely, by CPC funds. The town had made and took a decision to save up its funds for historic preservation for years, and enough to the point where the money that came, was already on hand and coming in, could pay for the debt to renovate that building, with the exception being things that aren't CPC-eligible. So those things can happen, but they take time and a plan that we want to do this project, and we're going to prepare financially, or whatever the need is, to be able to accomplish it. So we can start, but...
That would be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other councilors, any other questions? Ms. Alenberg?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions, like as a follow-up. I know there was an issue about whether town insurance would cover volunteers, and I know that it was asked. Has the insurance policy rider been checked? And may I ask what you found?
Are we deferring these for the next meeting?
I would say, yeah, this would be a request to...
I certainly think we can address that at the next meeting. We have talked to Maya, who's our insurance carrier, and we have all the exclusions from coverage.
Okay.
So we have, we had a meeting, we followed through on exactly what we said we were going to do, and we can easily report that at the next meeting.
We'll put that on the next Town Manager's report.
I have a few more questions, Mr. President.
Well, I would just, if they're not exactly related to what's on the report for this evening, I would just make them as requests for the next meeting.
Okay. And then the last question is, as to committees, we are discussing committees, so I will forego other questions. How do you feel about jurisdictional issues in terms of council appointments versus Town Manager appointments? I know you said long-term, but can you elaborate on that, please?
Well, again, it's regarding just...
So is that the question for the next agenda?
No, I believe, well, she's asking a question regarding the boards and commissions right now that she's mentioned it on, so she wants to comment on her philosophy on that.
My comment would be that I think we look at each individual situation that comes up with a committee, whether it's an appointment by the manager or an appointment by the council. What does that committee need to be functional in the short term? If it's a manager appointment, it needs to be functional. I'm going to do my best to make, with me, the Citizens Committee, make a good decision about filling it, and if it's for a committee that the council would ultimately ratify, I would bring it to you and let the council decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alenberg. Any other councilors before we wrap it up?
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to J, we do not have any discussion items on the agenda for tonight. I will move to committee reports. I know a couple of subcommittees did meet. Mr. Chase, did you have an update that you'd like to break for?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's already been alluded by public comment, you may know this, but the Rules and Procedures Committee did meet last evening to consider the order and ordinance that are both immediately following on our agenda this evening. And the committee was present, all three members of the committee, and with respect to both the order and the ordinance, each measure was approved with a recommendation for approval by the council. As amended, we made some very modest amendments, copies of which have been given to the council members this evening, and we did, in fact, make a positive recommendation for approval by the council.
Okay, and we can go over those amendments when we go over each, the order and the ordinance. That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any other subcommittees have any reports to report? I don't think anybody else...
Just that the budget and finance will meet next week at 6:15.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lindig.
All righty. So moving on to L, Legislation for Action. First one up is the Order OFY25-009, Town Manager Search Preliminary Screening Ad-hoc Committee, selection. So as Mr. Chase just pointed out, Rules and Procedures voted 3 to 0 to approve as amended. I will ask for a motion to approve as amended and a second for discussion afterward.
Second for discussion?
Yeah. Ms. Strickles and a second by Mr. McKinnon for discussion. I would go back to Mr. Chase if he'd like to elaborate on the amendments that were made.
Yes. The amendments were put forward by Councilor Murphy, who I think, as you recall, did draft the proposed legislation. So with respect to the ad-hoc search committee, this is Order FY25-009. I can read the language as it appears, as we have approved. And it reads, "Once established, the preliminary ad-hoc committee shall determine the method to acquire candidates." It refers to examples, higher search committee use MMA, et cetera. "To include screening of Town Manager applicants and providing the Town Council with the top three applicants, final selection shall be performed by the Town Council." The amendment that was made was quite minor, actually, but I'll read the amendment as it stands. Said preliminary screening ad-hoc committee shall consist of no more than four members of the Town Council and one member of the School Committee that is a resident of the town, effective through and including the next Town Election Day. So the purpose of the amendment, as was explained by Councilor Murphy last evening in committee, is to conform the length of this ad-hoc committee. Our charter does require a specific term for the ad-hoc committee, any ad-hoc committee to exist, and that had not been provided in the original legislation, so this provides for the cessation of the effectiveness of that ad-hoc committee through and including the next Town Election Day. That would be April of 2025.
Okay. And then, secondarily, I think at the end, Mr. Chase, there was a change from the top three applicants to something, no more than five applicants, if you can address that?
Yes. And it further reads, "Once established, the preliminary ad-hoc committee shall determine the method to acquire candidates, to include screening of Town Manager applicants, and providing the Town Council with no more than five applicants." So that was the nature of the amendment, to provide a limitation on the total number of applicants to be presented to the Town Council for final approval.
Great. All right. Any other...
Is that a motion to amend?
Oh, yeah, we'll have to take a motion to make those amendments, and then on the order itself.
I just didn't hear a motion to amend.
Okay. So based on those amendments, can I get a motion to amend?
Point of order, please.
Yes, Ms. Alenberg?
This is not going to be popular, but I understand there was a screw-up with the Zoom last night. Is that true?
No, Zoom was working. Just a couple of individual people had tough...
Because the original sign-up for Zoom was incorrect. If that is so, then the public was not able...
Public was present at the meeting.
There were two public members...
There were two public members in there. There were. I'm on Rules and Procedures. There were two members of the public in there.
If I could clarify, Mr. President?
Thank you. I'll refer to Mr. Chase.
Originally, this, the meeting that was conducted last night by the Rules and Procedures Committee had been scheduled for last Thursday evening. And in fact, the council members, the committee members, I should say, were able to log on and we were prepared to open the meeting, but it was discovered that residents were not able to use the link that had been provided on the town website. There was no way for us to contact the general public to say, this is an appropriate link, try this link instead. And so it was actually a discussion that, before we began the meeting, while the council members were, committee members were present, we indicated to, that our agreement, that it's not fair that the public cannot attend this meeting, much as we regret the need to reschedule, that's what we chose to do. And so immediately, our town council clerk prepared the meeting notice for what was last night's meeting, and we thought it's only fair that the public have an opportunity to attend. Now, last night, I know that, for example, one council member was able to attend as a member of the public.
Citizen?
That's correct. And also, there was one other member of the public who did attend, who was actually with us here this evening. So if...
That is true, but the fact that the Zoom correction was made at the last minute, I believe, as my point of order, has made it necessary to postpone and get the Zoom link correct, maybe 48 hours in advance, so more than two people can show up?
Well, while it was absolutely regrettable in each case that there was any difficulty with the communication, nonetheless, the committee did have a quorum last night, the public was admitted, the public was present, and we conducted our meeting.
They were admitted late.
Can I, can I just, just procedurally speaking?
Yes.
There still is not a motion to amend, nor has there been a motion to postpone. I think you guys are talking around two things.
Right.
I think you need to make motions and debate the motions and discuss the motions.
So regarding her point of order, Attorney Rollins, there's really no difficulty in the procedure that the town went through to have that meeting last night, in your opinion?
I, I don't know what procedure the town went through. I know that it's, it seems to me, based on the information you're providing now, which I've heard for a couple of minutes, it was proper notice. There was multiple means of attending the meeting.
Yep.
Either in person or otherwise, so it was what was considered a hybrid meeting. I, those are the facts. I don't, I haven't heard that there was an open meeting law violation, if that's what you're asking.
No, okay.
So, so the fact that the Zoom link might have not worked is not an open meeting law violation. Open meeting law is for ensuring that it's published, and if there are multiple means of getting to a meeting, then you have to exercise whatever means you can.
Hold on a second. I'll, I'll address, so I'm, hold on, Ms. Ellenberg. So based on the fact that the meeting was, was posted, the links did work for both the committee as well as the public, I don't see there being any issue at hand here. Mr. McKinnon, I saw a hand, just because you're on the subcommittee.
Again, though, not to interrupt, there have to be motions pending. If you all want to debate and discuss, that's perfectly acceptable.
So before I get to any other questions, then, so, I mean, again, I took your point of order, but again, I don't think there's any problem with that situation.
I do believe a point of order would take precedence over the main motion on the floor.
But are you making a motion to postpone?
Yes, I am.
So that's what I, I think we need to...
That's what I meant by my point of order. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Yeah, I think, I think you need to make a motion and then see if it's seconded, and then you all can have the debate about the motion.
All right. So based on your point...
I said move.
I didn't also hear a motion to amend initially.
Well, it was a point of order, not a motion that she made, so it wasn't exactly...
It's a motion on a point of order.
I think, I think there need to be, from what I've heard, and you all are the council, so I don't run your meeting, but I think there, I, what I've heard is there's an allusion to a possible motion to amend that has to be made and has to be seconded and then can be discussed. And then I've also heard there is a motion to postpone that needs to be seconded and then discussed. That's what I've heard.
Correct.
Mr. President?
Hold on. Yes, Ms. Ellenberg?
Through you to Mr. Rollins, the point of order motion will come first, correct?
You, yeah, the motion to postpone will come first.
All right.
Thank you.
So do I hear a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Lindy.
I was only able to get on the meeting as a citizen because one of my fellow counselors provided me the link. The link that was posted on the agenda had invalid, just for the record.
Okay.
Okay, for the record.
But you were still able to get on?
I did, but it took me...
Okay. And another general member of the public I heard was on as well. Mr. McKinnon?
I do just want it to be noted that, yes, that did happen where Mark couldn't get in, and I sent him a link, but also to other citizens, there were three citizens total in the meeting last night.
How late?
I did not reach out to either, didn't send no link to any of the citizens. They got in their way via the link or via the website. Zoom might just have issues right now, because, I mean, we've had three meeting, two meetings now that have, I think it's actually been three, that the Zoom links have been being funky with, so I don't think that's anything on our hands. But I will say, citizens did get in. We were going to meet last Thursday, but like the chair said, we did not meet because no citizens could get in.
Correct. So again, you guys, I think, made the appropriate, did you have a comment, Mr.?
I was just going to move the question to vote our motion.
Okay. All right, and so we have a motion to move the question.
So then requires a two-thirds?
Vote.
You vote. You move the question and that ends all the debate. You take a vote on the motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion to move the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robinson. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
This is to end debate, correct?
Correct.
This is to move the question.
Okay.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
So the vote on the table now is a motion to postpone based on the technical difficulties. Is that correct, Ms. Ellenberg?
That is correct.
All right. Can I, I buy a voice vote here. All those in favor postponing till a future meeting, please...
It hasn't been seconded. Wait a second.
It was seconded already. This is, we're moving the vote.
Okay, okay.
So all those in favor of postponing the, this, vote on this order to a future meeting, please signify by saying aye.
All in favor?
All in favor of moving this...
Postpone.
Postpone, yes.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And nays have it? So going back to the original motion that was on the floor, we had a first and a second for discussion.
So now you have to move...
Not on the floor.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Chase was getting, I just...
Yeah, we were still finishing up our amendments. Now, we're, we're voting, a motion, a motion for the amendments as proposed by Rules and Procedures. Do I have a motion to approve those amendments?
Second.
Ms. Strigels and second by Mr. McKinnon. Any further discussion on the amendments? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one through you to the town manager. Mrs. Robinson, I ask that you change the member of the school committee that is a resident to administrator of the school system that is a resident of the town. I spoke with the vice principal of the high school, Mr. Jared Lucere. He lives in town, he has children in the Bridgewater school system, and he has experience in the hiring process. He has graciously said yes to serving on this ad hoc committee. This appointment will not only give a voice to residents, but many of our parents, so I hope you consider the change. Thank you.
Mr. President? Yeah, for just, so Ms. McGrath, are you looking to make a motion to amend?
I can't. I don't think I can. Isn't the town manager appointed?
No, no, no. We're not dealing with appointments at this point right now. We're just talking about the language of the order right now. So the order itself states right now, one member of the school committee that is a resident of the town in Bridgewater. Are you looking to amend that description at all?
I would amend it, but I cannot because by the charter...
Yes, you can. No, you could...
Doesn't the town manager appoint that person?
No, that's a whole different situation. That's, we're not naming any names right now. We're just going by the language of the order and forming an ad hoc committee.
I thought she, I thought the town manager also, because as far as I know, Mr. Dutton said, he chose a member of the school...
Yeah, we're not, we're not dealing with, we're just looking at the language right now of the order, which is saying that the ad hoc committee shall consist of no more than four members of the town council and one member of the school committee that is a, is a town resident.
Okay, then I move to amend.
What is your amendment?
To change it to, to a member, administrator of the school system that is a resident of the town.
Second.
Administrator of the town...
No.
I mean, administrator of the school, of the school system that is a member of the town.
That is a resident of the town.
Well, then, basically, so instead of school committee, you're saying administrator...
Correct.
Of, of the, of the BR school system?
I'm just saying of the school system.
The district.
You can say BR, school system, yes.
All right. So you're making a motion for that. Do I have a second on that amendment?
Second.
For discussion, yes. Any discussion on that? Mr. Murphy?
Ms. McGrath, I just want to be on record that I wouldn't support that amendment only because the member of the town council, the school committee is an elected person, which I think speaks for the residents as a representation for the committee, and the administrator themselves is a higher position.
Who hires them?
Why, why is, I would support a member of the school committee because it's an elected official as written by the residents of the town. So I feel like that's a better representation of what the citizens would want on the committee, as opposed to an administrator who was hired for that role by a member within the system itself.
The only problem I see with the committee is it's a budget committee, has no interaction with students, has no idea what's going on, where the vice principal knows the students and the parents, so he would be a voice for the residents, and that's what a lot of residents want, to at least have a voice, and also for the parents. So he has more connection with our town than the budget committee.
Uh, sorry. Okay. Ms. Lindy?
On kind of both the points, I'm just going to go on record stating that I do not believe any of us would be asked to be on the superintendent's search committee should a vacancy arise, and therefore, I'm not in favor of either of them.
Okay. And the, Ms. Robinson?
I, I have a couple of perspectives that may be related to the original proposal, motion for amendment, as well as this new one, is it pertains to this one member of the school committee. There's a couple of things that, that has struck me as I've reflected in the past few weeks. We are also ideally looking, and I think we heard both from some other council members as well as members of the public, that they are looking for more input and diversity in terms of the voice of, the voices represented in the search committee. So that's something that I've been thinking about and making sure that we have enough of that lens, whether it's somebody who is familiar with operating some of our municipal departments, to budgeting, to school committee, et cetera. The other thing, too, is also I wonder about availability and willingness, which can be challenging if it's a very, very specific role for this one additional position in addition to counselors. I did speak directly with two school committee members, and while both said, it sounds interesting in, you know, to potentially be on an ad hoc search committee for a town manager, they could see the justification, but there also came questions around like how much of a time commitment, as much as they would love to support this effort, it could, you know, just increase their, their volunteering hours as well. So again, that was two school committee members that I spoke to personally, that I think the spirit was there, but there was definitely some concern around what does that commitment look like. So when I think about this, where I'm kind of coming is, I wonder if we make that additional member. I have not been a fan of increasing beyond five. Worst-case scenario, you know, is it seven for another odd? I don't recommend seven, but I'm just saying, if at least when we look at this one member, should we actually make it a little bit more flexible? So maybe it's an elected role for Bridgewater, whether it's the town clerk or a library trustee or a school committee member. I wonder if there is an opportunity to consider that and making, so which kind of reaches our ability to help diversify a little bit in terms of some of the perspective without pigeonholing, you know, availability or interest or want through a school committee member. Just something to ponder.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any other comments?
Comment?
Mr.?
I was just going to say to piggyback on Ms. Robinson's comment, my ordinance, which follows this one, is, it strictly just says establish a five-member screening ad hoc committee. I don't specify in my ordinance. I think for that reason, to allow for flexibility, especially in the future. So I just wanted to note that for when we get to that piece, you'll see that there's nothing specific in that ordinance naming positions or people. So, sorry if that was relevant or not relevant, but...
No, no, I think it is, so I'm glad you dovetail on that, yeah. Which makes it confusing, then, for this discussion, if that one is a little bit more broad.
Well, I, I think, so, just to comment back on that, I think this, the ordinance that Dr. Perry brought for the five-member current one is just for this situation, right? And I think that would be my intention when I wrote this, with that, the, an ordinance would be brought, I mean, an order would be brought every time we go through this process that would establish that committee in the way that the council sees fit, whatever that may be.
Gotcha.
So I was intending to leave flexibility in that second ordinance.
I think that that, thank you, because I don't even think that was fully landing for me either. So I think that distinction is incredibly important, that this specific ad hoc search committee is for this situation, whereas the ordinance for the charter change, or amendment, I should say, or addition, right, is, is, is more flexible. Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. McGrath, you have another comment you made?
Yes, that's a good point. So since it's just for this one, then I'd like to have the school vice principal, and after this, it will be anybody that you, we choose, right? But for this one, I would like at least to try to have someone different from the school committee. And he's willing to do it? He's, I've already talked to him about the commitment of the time.
But again, we're not talking about a specific person. We're, we're looking at a general...
Right, but I was just bringing it up because Ms. Robinson said the time and stuff. So I did have a conversation with the individual, so. And I asked if there were many people on the school committee, I mean, on the school administration and teachers who lived in town, and I was told there was a lot of them. So even if it's not the vice principal, it would open the door for someone else, even a teacher.
Right. Again, unless there's any questions to redirect to Ms. McGrath, let me comment on the sake that, you know, in writing this, I wrote for no more than four members of the town council, so it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be four members of the council, could be three and one additional person that could be named. So that I wanted to make that clear. And in naming one member of the school committee, again, as Counselor Murphy had mentioned, it was an elected position, again, to, again, create a certain, you know, level of, you know, elected person knowing, especially confidentiality needing, you know, to be had specifically in this part of the process with the ad hoc committee and screening names, that, and again, with the budget being, you know, two-thirds, you know, a majority of our town budget, and those potential questions and things could be brought forth at that time, I just felt that a school committee member, seeing the operational aspect of the, of the school and the budget would be a better fit than potentially an administrator, because again, the BR school committee is, runs itself. They don't really have interaction with a town manager on their day-to-day activities and how they interact with kids, how they teach their kids, whatever, you know, process that they go through. So that in itself, I don't think would be as an important role as potentially a representative of the school committee. But that's just where I was coming from when I, when I introduced the order. So that being said, any other further questions on her motion? I will...
I'd just like to make a comment that I do support Counselor Murphy's making this committee temporary.
It is, it's, an ad hoc committee is always temporary. It's, it's not anything that goes forward. We're just, this order would address what we're trying to do now in our current search for the town manager. This is why we did the, the, uh, the other, which we'll get back to after we take care of, of Ms. McGrath's amendment. So, uh, on Ms. McGrath's amendment, um, on changing, uh, the member of the school committee to an administrator, uh, by voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
So unfortunately, that, uh, motion, uh, does not carry. Going back to the original motion...
Mr. President, just quickly, uh, just for clarification, it, it reads consists of no more than four members of the town council and one member of the school committee. Are you saying no more than four and no more than one? So should, is no more actually twice there or once? Um, because I could envision a scenario if every, I think this just came up, if the school committee member says, or members that are approached for appointments say, "I don't want to do that."
Mm-hmm.
That puts you in a precarious situation where you can't fill a position that's required to be filled, um, so just thinking ahead, I, it's just not clear, semi, it's semantics, but I, I did hear that come up tonight, so you may want to clarify that, um, just so that that issue doesn't come up in the future.
So, what are you sugge, are you suggesting changing?
I'm not suggesting, it's up to you all, but, um, if you're talking semantics, it seems to read that it should consist of no more than four members of the town council and one member of the school committee. I would read that as it means no more than four town counselors and no more than one school committee member, right? Um, but you may want to just add no more than one school...
The no more, the no more.
Twice, in some fashion, so that it's very clear and there is no ambiguity in the future of, if every school committee member that's asked to do this or appointed to do this declines, then you don't want to be right back at the drawing board, that's all.
Sure, okay, I, I appreciate that. So, uh, we'll make the additional amendment to add the words no more than, uh, prior to the one member of the school committee that is resident of the town. Um, uh, I'll, uh, make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chase, any further discussion on that edit? Uh, Ms. Robinson?
Do we need to withdraw a motion right now?
What's that?
I feel like we're behind on a motion. Don't we need to withdraw one?
You, you have the initial one of Mr. Chase's motion to amend, but you're doing, you're voting...
We're coming, we're coming back to that.
I was just making sure, I was just making sure we were doing the process, right?
Yeah, you're voting just subsidiary amendments right now.
So, yeah, uh, and, you know, I can make that as an addendum to the, the initial two that were being proposed by the rules of procedure, instead of keeping it separate. Uh, Ms. Robinson?
Uh, so just to tie off, so worst case scenario, say a school committee member really is unavailable, so then what is the contingency plan? Because if the language says no more than four counselors, then it means, and we don't have a, a school committee member that would be willing...
I, I...
Then we have an even number.
Yeah, no, I believe, I, again, I, I have some confidence that there, there'll definitely be a person that will volunteer from the, from the school committee, so...
So for, for transparency though, it is the town manager's appointment and, in the event that somebody wasn't...
No, I, I mean, I, I've talked to a, a couple of people, so, I mean, there's, there's options there. So, uh, again, that will be the town manager's appointment as of the next meeting, so...
I'm just, I'm just trying to make it real clear for everybody.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Um, so, any other questions?
Is there a motion that was seconded to add no more?
I believe I did get that, didn't I, for discussion?
I, I made the motion, Mr. Chase. Seconded it, okay.
Seconded, yes, yes. And we're just having any further discussion on any more amendments. Mr. McKinnon, do you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay.
Just to be clear, to, to follow up on Counsel Robinson's comment, if there isn't a, a school committee member that could sit on this board, we would then come back and have to rewrite this order?
But then, yes, I would say that would, that would probably...
No, I, I, not if you're adding that language, right?
No more than...
Right, because we're saying we could operate with four.
Right, you're, that's why I'm saying, in order to prevent that, right?
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, thank you.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
My, my suggestion to you was to, was to...
Thank you for mansifying.
I think that was a, thank you.
No, I, I understand, I understand.
The, the reason for the suggestion was so that you all don't have...
We're not locked into that, yes, okay, I understand, I, I follow you now with Ms. Robinson.
Thank you for clarification.
I was confused.
So just to be clear, what are we voting?
So now the, the, the amended amendments are no more than, uh, prior to one member of the school committee, the, and the two members...
That would be the first vote, vote that first, and then...
Do it separately, okay, then we'll do that separately.
Correct, two separate motions.
Two separate motions, so that was a first and second. Any further discussion on the motion that I made regarding the words no more than?
Can I ask for roll call?
Seeing no, seeing none, you would prefer a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
All right, can I have a roll call vote then?
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigils?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against, motion passes.
Thank you. Now going back to the original, uh, edits that were made by the rules and procedures, we had a motion to second, any further discussion on those amendments? Seeing none, I'll ask for just a voice vo, a voice vote, ah, a voice vote.
I would like to have a roll call vote on the main motion.
All right, I can have a roll vote, a roll call vote on those, please.
Ms. McGrath?
We're just voting on the, uh, the initial two amendments that rules and procedures brought forth.
Same time, just one vote.
They're both, both together at one vote, correct. Roll call vote, please.
Pardon me, clarification, you said they're two together, the ordinance and the order?
The two amendments that were, uh, brought forth by rules and procedures, that's what we're voting on now, and we're doing it by roll call vote.
I understand, but we're doing them together versus separately?
They were brought forward together as...
Oh, all right, yeah. Okay.
They were brought forth together as, as recommendations by rules and procedures. Can I get a roll call vote on that, please?
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigils?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. So now to the order itself as amended, we had a motion second for discussion, any further comments? Mr. McKinnon?
I just would like to keep this at the council level, did we make that in the motion?
I believe this is, actually, no, this is legislative action, we're, we're voting on approval of this tonight. We've already had this in front of us once, this is the second time. All right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, and, oh, Ms. Ellenberg?
Forgive me, but you say this is the second reading?
Yes, the last reading was referred to rules and procedures.
Yes, I thought rules and procedures had to have two readings, uh, second one after amendments have been made at the council level.
No, they do not.
I'll check that, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so had a motion and a second, uh, I will ask, actually, I'll ask for a roll call vote on this.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigils?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the proposed ordinance, D F Y twenty-five dash zero-zero-five ordinance establishing the process for hiring a town manager, uh, again, I'll refer back to, uh, Mr. Chase from rules and procedures to go over changes that were made at his meeting.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a, a simple, uh, amendment was made in the committee last evening with respect to this proposed ordinance, and, um, uh, the, to give you the preliminaries, the, the ordinance as first considered by the rules and procedures committee last night, provided that background checks and reference checks shall be conducted by the preliminary screening ad hoc committee for all finalists. And, uh, the amendment was introduced by Counselor Murphy, uh, which the committee discussed and voted on and unanimously adopted this amendment. It reads, "The preliminary screening ad hoc committee will ensure that the proper background checks have been completed for all finalists."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chase. Uh, that was the only amendment made to the entire ordinance.
Actually, Mr. Chase, there was one additional amendment made, sorry, it was not listed here, and you asked me to double-check that, so that's my fault. But in the same section five of the original ordinance, number one, it also states that the committee will present, select at least three, but no more than five finalists to be presented to the full council. I ask that it be in line with the previous order that was brought forth to you, and just be clarified to say, striking the at least three, and just have no more than five finalists to be presented. And the same reasonings that Mr. Chase described in the last order, I, I just didn't want to put a minimum required number that we bring before the committee, should there not be three qualified candidates, but I wanted to allow for up to five.
Sure. And that also was reviewed by rules and procedures?
That's correct, thank you for that clarification, Counsel.
Is that, is that part of Mr. Chase's motion to amend?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, that was, just wasn't included on the paperwork.
Is it written in if you say it's not there, or what?
It's written in. You have a copy on your desk.
May, can I ask a point of information?
Uh, hold on a second, uh, go ahead, Mr. Lindy.
Uh, through you to Counsel Chase, um, it's, checks have been completed for all finalists. I couldn't comment further because I was a citizen at that meeting, so who's going to do that?
Let me ask if Counselor Murphy, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Counsel Lindy, my idea for that would be that either the hired search firm would help assist in that, or, uh, a member of the town, uh, working with that ad hoc committee. I just didn't feel like it was, should be the sole responsibility for individual counselors to be conducting background checks on their own.
I understand that, but who on behalf of the town?
Well, I don't, I just didn't think we needed to get as specific in there.
I, I kinda do.
I didn't want to get as specific.
I kinda do think we need to be specific. Would it be the HR department? I mean, somebody has to be charged with that responsibility.
I was just gonna say, I would suggest if he wants to make a motion or, or amendment to that...
Well, I'll just, just speak to that, I believe that the point that he's trying to get is, the ad hoc most likely will be moving forward with an outside firm to do that, and the firm will typically do the outside checks.
So then I will suggest an amendment that, um, the preliminary screening ad hoc committee will ensure that the proper background checks have been completed by the search firm for all finalists.
Uh, just to, to clarify that, the ad hoc committee would make that determination of the direction that they're going with in as far as the search itself, whether they would do it theirselves or use an outside firm, so that determination hasn't been made yet.
I would like to second his motion.
So we're not picking an outside firm? The ad hoc committee is in charge of deciding that situation.
Really? We were told all along that we were going to look at an outside firm.
Well, that's the direction that they're going in, yes, but, probably, but I'm just saying that's, that's up to the ad hoc committee to, that's part of their purview.
Counsel Lindy, just to clarify, to, to go on that, my order itself just establishes a process, so in this process, it doesn't say that all future committees will have to select a search firm. So that, that language isn't in there, and that's, I'm just planning for all searches going forward. I'm not saying we should require having a search firm in here.
I don't think we should ever consider doing anything without a search firm, sorry.
Uh, Ms. Ellenberg, got a question?
Yes, I would like to second Mr. Lindy's motion that the background checks be done by the search firm. I would like to second that motion.
I understand, but again, the, if you put it into the ordinance, again, and I agree, Mr. Lindy, that the better direction is to go with the search firm, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the direction that does, is being taken, not saying that that's not the direction that's going to be taken, but it's leaving it more open-ended for the future ad hocs that are in place to determine what directions they want to go with, maybe there's a change down the line where the, the searching for candidates for, for, uh, a new town manager may change. Right now, I, I agree, and that's been the recommendation that I've seen right along as well. I'm not saying that's not the direction to go, but I'm saying he's just keeping the language a little bit more open for flexibility, um, but if you want to make a motion for that...
I made the motion.
Okay?
And I have seconded it.
Okay, further discussion by any of the other councils?
I'm sorry, what's the motion? And it looked like Counsel Murphy also had, has been trying to interject a comment.
Preliminary screening ad hoc committee will ensure that the proper background checks ha, have been completed by the search firm for all finalists.
Second.
That's, that's the motion.
That's the motion.
Versus, okay.
And then, Mr. Murphy, you had your...
I was just gonna make one more comment, I, I would just caution us getting really specific on this, because I think when we appointed Ms. Robinson in her role, we did so without a search firm, because it wasn't specified in order, so in cases like that, I would say we didn't need a search firm to appoint a temporary or interim town manager, but if we add this in here, I believe we would have to go through a search firm every single time, which would essentially really draw out a, a long process for even naming an interim town manager.
This is for a town manager, it doesn't say anything about interim.
Well, I, I think, correct me if wrong, we could refer to the, the attorney for this, but it's for any vacancy of the town manager role.
We don't hire the assistant town manager, but...
I'm not, just the town manager.
We, we appoint a interim if we don't have a permanent...
This doesn't, this says for hiring a town manager, it doesn't say the word interim in there.
And this is temporary committee?
It actually says, well, in the, um, section... Sorry, my microphone's not on. Section one purpose, I think what you, you all are proposing, it says the purpose of this ordinance is to establish a formal process for the recruitment, selection, and hiring of both enacting where necessary and/or permanent town manager.
All right, uh, any further discussion by any council members?
I just wanted to say that what Mr. Rollins just read was for the interim if necessary. So I would say Mr. Lindy's language is for permanent town manager positions, and I think that standard should be met for a permanent town manager status.
I understand, but the language of the ordinance is addressing both enacting and/or permanent, so we're trying to use this as a process to do both going forward.
If necessary. Yes, it is a process for both, but the second one, interim, is only, is limited by if necessary.
But this is the concern by putting this search firm language in the, in the, uh, language as being promoted, because again, that would make the town now have to use a search firm to find just an interim town manager and belabor the process going forward.
No, only if necessary, it, however, okay, we should aspire to the standards of professionalism, and I think since this is a temporary thing, we're talking about the permanent situation, and let us aspire to good standards of selection.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Uh, did you have another comment, Paul? Okay. Uh, Ms. McGrath?
I just would, um, just ask one question for you, Counsel Murphy. Um, once the initial screening's done and the town council's gonna see the candidates, will the council be able to see the resumes and qualifications of each individual?
When I present the five, when the committee presents the five?
Yes, all the information regarding all the candidates will be brought forward in front, yeah.
All the finalists will be...
That will be presented to all the town council, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So then on the motion, uh, on hand with, uh, by Mr. Lindy to buy, uh, to, the motions to add by the search firm, uh, under the line of the preliminary screening ad hoc committee will ensure that the proper background checks have, be completed by the search firm for all the finalists, that is the motion on the table. Um, I will ask for a voice, I'm sorry, a, uh, let's, let's go start with a voice vote just to see if we can determine. if we can determine. Those in favor of Mr. Lindy's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
I believe the nays have it. Going back to the proposed amendments presented by the Rules and Procedures, with again, the two meaning, the two being selecting no more than five finalists, and the final line of the preliminary screening ad hoc committee will ensure the proper background checks have been completed for all finalists. I had a motion in a second. Again, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of those amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. So, now I'm asking for a motion to send this ordinance now to advertising. A motion to send advertising.
Second.
Ms. Robinson, second, by Mr. McKinnon. All those in favor of sending this ordinance to advertising, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it as well. We will send it to advertising. All right, moving forward. We do not have any old business to address this evening, but we do have some new business to attend. Order OFY 25-010, granting of an easement, Mass Electric Company. I believe this is regarding, I'll actually refer to the town manager to give us an update on this order, please.
Thank you. Mr. President, this order is to allow for a permanent easement in the right-of-way to relocate the utilities that we need for National Grid to serve electricity to the new fire station.
Ah, very good.
Very important.
Very important, yes. We are looking to keep this at a council level, so we don't need to refer it, so I have a motion to keep this at a council level, please.
So moved.
Mr. Lindy, second, by Mr. McKinnon. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we'll bring this up in our next meeting. Order OFY 25-011, granting of an easement, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Again, I'll refer to the town manager for an update.
Counsel Chase.
I think this is the order. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me see. I'm just looking for that particular, I'm sorry, again, it's Counsel Chase, I'm sorry. Counsel Chase, if you'd like to make an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had earlier heard some remarks by Town Resident Kitty Doherty, who I think we're all familiar with. I've provided to the council members this evening, just a brochure that provides some basic information about the nature of the old State Farm Trail. Certainly, Ms. Doherty's remarks were really much more informative, because she pointed out that, for some 14 years, this has been a matter that's been, certainly that many people in town have been striving to achieve, and somewhat surprisingly, several years ago, it became feasible, since by virtue of the town's sponsorship or hosting, I should say, of the fire services facility, the Commonwealth did give us the opportunity to create an easement to create the old State Farm Trail. And certainly, the work that Kitty Doherty and a good many others, working with her, and the natural resources trust of Bridgewater have done, has moved this, as best I can say, in terms of government action, it's moved fairly swiftly, but we know that's not in fact really swift. But nonetheless, it's gotten us to the point where we now see, we now see the opportunity for actual work to begin on the trail. And so, accordingly, I would urge the council to approve this grant of an easement, accept this grant of an easement from the Commonwealth, and I certainly thank Kitty Doherty and everyone else involved. I had an opportunity several years ago, to walk that trail, and with Kitty Doherty, with any others, and I think it's actually gonna represent a very important addition to Bridgewater's use of open space for passive recreation. And I would urge the council to approve this.
Yes, and we're going to keep this at a council level as well, we know we don't need to refer it. So, again, to re, this is a conservation easement, allowing the work to begin to take place on the old State Farm Trail. So, do I have a motion to keep it at a council level?
Second.
Ms. Strigles, second, by Mr. McKinnon. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will bring this up in our next meeting, and thank you, Kitty. All right, next. Paper, 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 okay. The next one, order OFY 25-012, contract for the acting town manager. Obviously, this was introduced by myself. We have reviewed the potential contract for the, for the acting town manager, and it was approved in executive session, so this is the first reading publicly for the contract. Again, keeping at the council level, I'll ask for a motion to keep it at the council level, and bring it up in our next meeting.
So moved.
By Mr. Lindy, second, by Ms. Strigles. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. We'll bring this up in our next meeting. All right. Next, we have order OFY 25-013, transfer order salary to expense. I will refer to Town Manager Blythe Robinson for some background on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. To fund both the actions to have professional services for the town, acting town manager going forward, and to fund the contract for animal control services the town entered into earlier this year, we need to make transfers from salary accounts into the expense accounts. So, that's why these orders are in front of you.
Thank you very much. I'll ask for a motion to move to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved, second.
Second.
So, primary by Mr. Lindy, second by Mr. McKinnon. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say, oh, Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to the town manager. So, we don't, this is an outside animal control contract, or?
Yes, it is.
Do we have anybody?
Precision Wildlife Services, I think is their name.
Okay, no one's qualified as employee here?
I think a decision was made at some point in the recent past, that the town would be better served by having a contracted service than a employee. I think there were some challenges when coverage of that, since it's basically a 24/7 service that we need to offer, and so, a decision was taken to change to a company.
Okay, and one other question. So, if we, to be covered, say like at 11 o'clock at night, if somebody had an animal, would they call this company? Would they be transferred to this company? Because I know I had a resident that said they called the animal with the, you know, with a problem, but no one answered.
Whether they call, or they use the email information that's on the website, they would be directed to this company.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I had a first and a second. All those in favor of moving to Budget and Finance Committees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thank you. Next up. Order OFY 25-014, contractual payments. Again, I refer to Town Manager for update on this, please.
I'd actually like to ask, Mr. President, if I can defer this to the next meeting, in terms of getting you the details I needed to confer with the finance director?
Okay, sure, we'll move, we'll move this particular order to our next meeting's new business.
Do we need to vote on that as well, or no?
No, we do not.
Are you postponing it, or are you just keeping it at council level?
Just postponing, well, again.
Yeah, so you do need to vote to postpone it.
We need, I'm sorry, my.
Yeah, I, I think Ms. Robinson was just saying she couldn't fill in information at first reading. I don't think, she's saying, don't do first reading.
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry, so I can still vote to send to Budget and Finance and Finance, if she's prepared to do so?
If, if you want to keep the thing moving along.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said.
Her only role in that is just to give you all information, I think, don't, correct me if I'm wrong. I think she was deferring to say, when it comes up for vote, she'll have more information from the finance director.
Oh, I see. Again, well, this is to, then to, generally to the, to the council members, again, this is the, moving again, funds from Employee Liability Fund to different salary accounts for police, fire, and general government. But again, she'll provide more details.
I believe it's to fund contractual obligations, whether they be for retirement payouts, or...
Right, and we've run into this before, so it's pretty standard.
But I just wanted to triple check.
But as far as, you know, just specific information, we can get that next time. So, do I have a motion then to send to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
So moved.
Mr. Lindy?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Robinson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved, we'll move to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. Sorry for the confusion there. All right, next item up. We have a transfer order, order OFY 25-015, transfer order, public education, government for town council chambers. Again, I'll refer to the town manager for information on this.
So, these were to fund some changes and upgrades to equipment, to able to, enable us to better stream meetings. We've had issues with that in the past, upgrade equipment that the IT department needed to purchase.
Fantastic. Do I have a motion to move to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
So moved.
Mr. Lindy, second, Ms. Strigles. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, next. We have order O-FY 25-016, acceptance of a gift from Bridgewater State University. Again, Ms. Robinson, for any description?
My understanding, this is an annual gift from BSU, and the money is split equally between, as the note says on your order, between police, fire, and highway services for that.
Yep, thank you, that's typically received each year from BSU. Do I have a motion to send to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lindy, second, by Ms. Robinson. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Mr. President, I have a question to the town manager on this topic. In terms of gifts from Bridgewater State University, do we get payments in lieu of taxes from the university like we used to? And do we have any chance of increasing that for some of these developments that will be happening to town?
Through you, Mr. President, I think I need to do a little more research on that. I, I'm.
She's probably not overly privy, Ms. Ellenberg, but this is a common gift that the BSU gives each year?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson, question?
So, I literally asked this question the first time I became a counselor as well, and unfortunately, we, we can't really ask for more, was what I was told. I think it's just, it's a discretionary gift that the university gives us, yeah. But, you're right on time. Like I said, I asked the same thing.
Thank you, and of course, we taxpayers put into those funds that the state gives us, so of course, we can ask.
All right, moving on to zoning ordinance DFY 25.
Do we need to refer that?
I'm sorry, did I not, I'm sorry, I thought, sorry, did I not go through the motion on that?
Did we refer?
No, you voted.
Did I vote on that?
Just checking.
Oh, yeah, I thought I did already.
Getting long.
All right, so zoning ordinance DFY 25-003, proposed amendment to the Central Business District, CBD dash S, density bonuses 9.6.7. This was brought forth by Counsel McGrath. Ms. McGrath, would you like to elaborate on what you have here?
Yes, I'd like to bring the bonus density that is presently at 26 units down to 22.
Is that the only changes that you're making in that section?
Yes.
Second?
Well, that's, we're not, this is, this is looking to be referred to the Planning Board and Community and Economic Development. Do I have a motion to send to those committees?
Can we have a discussion to explain why?
Well, we need, again, a motion and a second, and then for discussion, if you'd like to go ahead and do that, so.
So moved.
Do I have a motion to send to those committees?
Motion for, second for discussion.
Second for discussion, for Mr. McKinnon. Okay, go ahead, Ms. McGrath.
So, the reason I want to lower the density rate is based on the MBTA Final Revised Section 3A, where it states, but compliance with Section 3A does not require town or cities to install new water or wastewater infrastructure to add to the capacity of existing infrastructure to accommodate future multifamily housing. Where public systems currently exist, but capacity is limited, private developers may be able to support the cost of necessary water and sewer extensions. While the zoning must be allowed for gross average density of at least 15 units per acre, there may be other legal or practical limitations, including the lack of infrastructure or infrastructure capacity. So, the burden does not fall on us, the town. Density should fall out of the responsible design and the constraints, which we have with water and water waste. So, I believe we need to do a due diligence before moving forward. So, I'm passing out a paper that has the law, and there's a webinar on the bottom. So, I'd like to encourage my fellow councils to watch this, as I am inclined to suggest that we hire Mr. Pennzella, who is on the webinar, as to, as a consultant for the councils before making any more decisions in development. He is a consultant for the MBTA and Massachusetts Housing. So, it's very educational, before we move forward on spending a lot of money on infrastructure that we don't have to, for more housing.
All right, well, again, so I would appreciate you forwarding that information. Is that copy's coming around? Okay.
Also, information about the mixed density bonus, I mean, the mixed housing, the retail, because my proposal is postponed, so I had put it with that, so there's also, you can look at that. And that's the Final Revised from the MBTA restrictions.
Okay, so I would, again, I probably ask to make sure that certainly our Community and Economic Development Subcommittee, again, as all councils are getting it, I imagine, passing on this information to the Planning Board as well, and then they'll review it and bring it back to us, and we'll see where it goes. So, any other further questions, discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Thank you for putting this forward. I was curious where you got the calculation down to 22, or how you formulated that.
I just thought, when I've watched them, the planning for the Yellow House, that lot, I don't know if it's 63 or 93 Main Street, it was so much for the 26th, that the Planning Committee actually told them to bring it down to 23. So, I figured down to 22, because we only have to give them 15, so at least we're giving them a little bit of a density bonus. The 26th did not fit on that lot of land.
And, and I'm curious, did you discuss or ask, you know, around this topic with the?
Mr. Ruley?
Yeah, Mr. Ruley, the CED Department at all?
No, I actually thought he would be here, but I figured he is well aware of the water and the water construction, where we're talking about it, the revised, that we don't have to support it, developers, that actually, the consultant, he suggests that if a developer wants 20% of our water, then he should give 20% of whatever we're gonna do with extensions or new. So, the developers are supposed to help us, and we, we don't have to have a burden of having to, that requires all this building because of our capacity. So, this is what the MBTA is telling towns, and this is what the webinar is about. So, if you watch it, I mean, he can, he speaks in much more deeper details, and tells towns not to jump forward and do this, unless, you know, because you don't have to add the water to, for it to build up. The MBTA does not require you to do that.
That is true. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Any other questions from any councilors? All right, seeing none, all those in favor sending to the Planning Board and Community and Economic Development, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. So, item I, Ms. McGrath is not ready to be brought forth yet, I was made aware of. You're the next zoning ordinance that you're proposing.
That one's been proposed, was pulled.
That was pulled?
Yeah, there was a section missing.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to confirm. All right, so we are going past I, moving to J. Proposed ordinance DFY 25-006, Bridgewater Town Charter Amendment for Gender Neutral Language, brought forth by Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, this, this supports the Town Charter Committee Review, who suggested this, when they brought forth, suggested changes to the charter, so it's just a long overdue change to the current charter of changing any references to his, to they, to be gender neutral in our town charter.
All right, I will ask for a motion to send to Rules and Procedures.
Second.
Second for discussion, any discussion on the matter? Ms. Robinson?
I'd just like to say I fully support this, and I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Excellent. So, seeing nothing else, all those in favor sending to Rules and Procedures, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That wraps up our business for this evening.
No, no.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying, that's just the business.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. So, moving next to citizens' comments. So, if any citizens would like to come forward, again, please do, to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you so much.
Sir, how you doing? Good, good evening, everybody. My name is Josh Randall, One Claroray Drive, Bridgewater. Been here for almost 40 years. Prior Chairman of the Veterans Council in town. This past Flag Day, very disheartened to see the rainbow flag in replace of the POW flag. It's very disrespectful to all veterans of this community. I know, I share a lot of different, I've had a lot of people come up to me about it, and it's, it's actually very disrespectful, and I actually don't want to see it again. Because there's multiple laws, specifically Public Law 11667, National POW MIA Flag Act, which was passed in the Senate, and I hope this, this body would, would move forward with some type of legislation to make sure that flag stays on that pole, because it's disrespectful. We had a citizen of this community die overseas, his body got brought back here, Kevin Preach, you have a bridge named after him, and you want to put a, look, I treat everybody fair and equal, I have friends in that category, but the, that flag does not belong anywhere out front of this building, at all, period. I really don't want to see it again. It's disrespectful. It was on Flag Day, the POW flag was supposed to be flying. Absolutely disrespectful. Absolutely disrespectful to the men and women who serve this country. And it should be back up, and it's not. Should be ashamed of themselves. This town's starting to go down bad. And secondly, the town clerk, I know she's an elected official, but the last polls was a disgrace. She was disrespectful to the people who work at the polls. My mother being one, she almost has 50 years as a warden in the polls in this town. And that town clerk went up to everybody and said, "You're not allowed to eat in here. No more eating. Take your candy or whatever you have and put it down." Well, as a firefighter, I know some people are diabetic and need to keep their sugar up, and they don't get breaks like people should be getting breaks, because you don't, you can't find anyone to work. So she's in there being disrespectful to everybody, and then what I can't deal with is that she's telling my mother and everybody else in there, and I've heard it from multiple sources that work there, that they cannot put a political flag up on their own property. And the judge, a judge in this Commonwealth has already ruled on it. It's a First Amendment right. So anyone working at the polls has every right to put up any sign they want, and she's telling them, she's going to get this town in some serious trouble, and she better knock it off, too, because she's running rogue. And I'm just letting you know, this is the stuff that's been happening around town. But as for my mother, she's putting up a sign, and if she, if the town clerk wants to make a big deal out of it, well, I can recall her. 1,800 votes. I'll just get rid of her. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Randall.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up?
Hi, Janet Henson, Pleasant Street. Just a couple of things. As far as the density bonus, I still, I still don't get that, why we even have to have bonuses for people. This is the CBD-S, which is the central square going down to Main Street. That's up there, not the CDR down further. And I think this is way too much. It opens the door for things to happen in the center of town. I know it goes through the Planning Board, but it just, there's loopholes here. I think 22 is way too high, as it is. 18, you know, I question that, too, but I would like to see it even lower. So that's my comment on that. And the charter change on the ordinance proposed by Mr. Paul Murphy, my understanding, the, all these changes will go to the charter, Town Charter that we have, and eventually it will, once it's, if it's approved here at Town Council, eventually will go to the state, and then it comes back to the voters. Am I correct on that? Can you at least nod your head that that's correct, that these will go to the charter, and then eventually the town will be voting? And the only other thing, which is kind of a mute point, I am disappointed that it wasn't brought up on the five members of the ad hoc. I and a lot of other people wanted to see it more than five, but it stuck at five. Seven would have been better, and the perfect example, you were discussing about, if somebody from the school committee can't commit, then it leaves you four. So if you had seven, you're better off, chance of having what the number of people you need. You keep talking about maybe the school committee is not going to be able to commit. So that is a perfect example why it should have been more than five, and that should have been brought up. So I am disappointed on that, but it sounds like that's a done deal. So I just wanted to make that comment. As I say, I'm not the only one who wanted, you know, more. A lot of people wanted nine, but I think seven would have been a more rounded odd number, and I don't know if that can be changed. But Planning Board, I guess I'll be speaking to the Planning Board about the densities, and I think that's all I had right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right. Thank you for those citizens that came up and spoke. We will now move on to council comments. I'll start with Mr. McKinnon to my right.
Nothing serious, just with the debate tonight and all that, I just ask anyone that's watching or that's here to remember what it was like on 9/12/2001, when the country was one instead of divided, because it's a little crazy out there in this world. And I mean, I was seven or eight years old, so I don't remember it that well, but I do remember watching Patriots and Jets play. Fans all holding American flags showing that we're all one, and we are the United States of America, no matter what happens in November. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Ms. Robinson?
I only laughed because I was like, "You were a baby." That is so, so lovely to say, though, because that was a tremendous day for those of us who do remember about how unified the country was on the 12th. I, what do I have to say? Probably not too much, the usual thank you, you know, folks who continue to show up. And, you know, I know that, and this is probably just for the benefit of anybody who does watch later for any kind of recording, I still want to echo the sentiment of, I personally, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I really do believe that there is a consistent spirit here of, we do want community input. So however the design of this actual ad hoc search committee shakes out, it does not preclude, exclude, whatever you want to talk about, in terms of, it's so vital to get community input, so I will be a big advocate for that through multiple points throughout the process. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Allenberg?
I would like to echo Mr. McKinnon. We are all Americans first, before party. We will be watching a debate tonight, and I ask that all councilors listen to constituents, respond, and keep them in mind. Secondly, I'd like to compliment Counselor McGrath, and that has to do with your amendment for reducing the zoning density, which I think is where the people of this town want. So that was very good of you to bring that. Thank you. My compliments. That's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Mr. Murphy?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Murphy, Mr. Lindy?
So two things. Tomorrow being 9/11, which I remember, because I wasn't that young. I remember exactly where I was that day. I was working my cable job in Brockton, and the mayor's office called me and said, "The TV's not working." And I got there just in time to turn the TV from TV, from video to TV so it would work, and I saw the second plane hit. So it's a really solemn day. There's a ceremony at 8:45 in East Bridgewater. There's a ceremony at 8:30 in Brockton. We don't have a ceremony. This is the 23rd year. My goal is by the 25th year, hopefully this town will have a ceremony. Maybe we didn't have anyone in this town that passed away on 9/11, but we probably all were connected to someone. For me, it's also the 7th anniversary of my dad's passing, so it's going to be a tough day. I got to teach my classes tomorrow, but my mind's going to be on that. The election with the debate tonight, I assigned all my students to watch it, so I have to watch it, so I know what they're going to say, that they're going to analyze it. The other thing is, we always promote good causes here. Tomorrow night over at, I'm not promoting the restaurant, at Krispy's, there's a Walk to End Alzheimer's fundraiser, September 11th, from 5 to 8, that raises money for the people that walk in that walk. Leslie Barboza, who's a community volunteer, asked me if I would bring this up at the meeting and just let people know. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank in particular Counselor Lindy for your comments that I think were very appropriate and very mindful with respect to the commemoration of 9/11. And I think that for those of us who do have a vivid recollection of the events of that day, they certainly are, see it in our memories. And I agree that I would hope that at a future point, we may be able to offer our own form of commemoration right here in the town. So I thank you for that. I thought that was a very good comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Strigels?
Thank you, Mr. President. I said it privately, but I just want to congratulate Counselor Allenberg and her daughter for the wedding that they had this weekend. And you're very welcome. The pictures looked beautiful. And I'd also like to commend Counselor McGrath on your efforts. Legislation during this time has been rather difficult, but you've taken it in stride, and I just wanted to say, I can't speak for everybody here, but I'm proud to sit next to you, so thank you for that.
Very good, Ms. Strigels. Ms. McGrath?
I want to thank the Osamaquin, if I spoke that sentence.
Well, Osamequinn is the Native American way. It's a women's group.
It's a women's group. There's, it's a women's group, and they invited me to high tea. It's a club that's been running since 1898. The women support many charities annually, and annually give three scholarships to high school grads. I had a lot of fun, and Ms. Allenberg is a member out there.
I'm a member of the club, yes.
So I got to see her, too.
We try to do good charity.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. I always thought it was Osamaquin.
Osamaquin, and then we had a speaker come and tell us the Native American name of Chief Massa Sawit was Osamequinn. Osamequinn being the first name, Massa Sawit being his last name.
Can I just add to that? I found out all these years that I've been teaching, 31 years at Massa, Sewit, S-E-W-I-T. When someone spelled it out for me, then I figured out how to pronounce it properly. It's, the Native American pronunciation is Massa Sewit.
You learn something new every day.
Massa Sewit.
Sewit. All right. Again, lending to, you know, Mr. Lindy's comments, I would definitely like to see the town do something for 9/11, hopefully by, hopefully the 25-year anniversary. I know I was a month away from having my first child when 9/11 hit, so I remember it quite vividly, and my thoughts and prayers go out to everyone out there who was affected in any way by 9/11. Hard to believe it's been 23 years already, as my oldest child reminds me of his age as being almost 23 now. I do want to just thank the committee as a whole for all the discussion that we went through tonight and the amendments that were made, but I think we're taking some positive steps forward as a council with having an ad hoc in place. Again, you know, suggested the five, more so for just the ability to work as streamlined as possible to move forward in finding a candidate that we can bring forward in front of this entire council, using the public, getting their feedback. We will definitely be doing that in multiple ways. I don't want the public to think that we're bypassing them at all, that this is going to be as transparent a process as possible, but hopefully an efficient one at that. So I think the five-member ad hoc is going to allow that to happen. You know, MMA itself recommends, you know, ad hocks of five to seven. I also think that by moving forward on the ordinance, we are laying the groundwork that not only this council but future councils can follow to go ahead and either put in place an acting town manager or hire a new one. So I do want to thank Council Murphy for his efforts on putting a lot of that language together, all of that language together. And hopefully, again, this allows us to move forward as a council in this process of finding a new permanent town manager, which can serve the needs and the wants of the town of Bridgewater. So with that, I have nothing further. We do not need executive session this evening, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in adjournment. Thank you so much for coming.